Seeing that it is hour of 6:00 PM on August 16th, I'll call to order the Planning Commission of the City of Series. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, looks like I got myself out of order here. So notice this meeting will be held in accordance with the Executive Order N 2920 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17, 2020, Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950 et cec, and the Federal Americans with Disability Act. This meeting will be open to the public and also accessible via Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing anne.mcmcory@ci-series.ca.us by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission. We now move to roll call. Will clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Katchel. And Chairperson Smith.
Here. Thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Saying none, we'll move on to Citizen Communications to the Commission on matters not included on the agenda. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in the Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Please come to the podium. Right, thank you. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located on the bottom right of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press star nine on your phone. Names will be called in the order of the requests are received and your microphone will be unmuted when it's your time to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom who's indicating that they're speaking?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Have we received any public comments through email?
No, I have not received any.
Thank you. So then we'll move on to consent item. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from consent? Saying none, I'll remind the Commission that I was not in attendance at the June 21, 2021 meeting. So when making a motion, please make two separate motions, one for all of the items and one for the June 21 meeting. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion for the consent calendar based on those instructions. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I asked at the beginning if there was anything you wanted to remove from consent. I'm sorry, I didn't see. I'm sorry. Would you like to have an item removed? Number three. All right, so we will, number three, I'll bring it back to the Commission and note that the approval of the consent calendar will exclude item three.
Motion, item four on the consent.
Two A.
Two A.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve items one, two A, and item four. Second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Will clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Katchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Right.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
Another motion to approve them to B.
I have a motion. Second. Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Will clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Katchel.
Hi.
Johnson. Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith is abstaining, so motion passes three zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Moving now to item three, Lot Line Adjustment 2102, Resolution Number PC 2117, approving a lot line adjustment for Rowiem Ventures LLC and Doyle Ventures LLC to adjust an existing property line share between two properties located at 1351 East Hatch and 1319 Herndon Road. Or did you want to approach the podium?
John Warren, Series. Thank you for coming to speak this evening, Commissioner.
Excuse me, sir, one minute. I'm having a hard time hearing. Is there a volume adjustment for his microphone? Okay.
Maybe that helped?
A little bit.
Okay.
Your name again?
John Warren, W A R R E. I live in the City of Series. And thank you for allowing me this moment, this evening, to speak. I have a couple of questions on the lot line adjustment. I see that the properties, the parcels are owned by the same people. Been for a long time. 1351 East Hatch Road, I believe, is the existing old Kmart parking lot. And I understand by looking at the information that was online, that there's a small piece of property on Herndon, about half an acre that adjoins, and both these parties own existing property Kmart and that small parcel there that's on. My question is, why do they want to adjust the line? Number two is I understand that access to the act property, when this lot line is put in place, there will be a line east and west across that property, which will put the existing building in the back and the vacant lot in the front. And my concern is where is that line going to be in relation to the front of the existing building? So how will access take place there if one or the other of the properties is sold and is used for something? You can come around the back of the building with the way the lot line is because the access comes off Herndon. When you come around to the other side, how do you get to the front of the building? If one parcel is owned by someone else and the other parcel is owned by someone else, where's the access to the front of the existing building? And is it blessed? Why do they want to do it in this particular?
For your question, Mr. Westbro.
Lot line adjustments are fairly common. In this circumstance, you have a property that's smaller and one that's larger. The owner is just looking to better position themselves for future development. In terms of the access to the front and the back, commercial developments are required to record a reciprocal parking and access easement. So it won't matter where the lines are, they'll simply just be on the ground, but everyone will have access to park on either property. Further to that, staff has also been working with a developer who we anticipate will be submitting a development application that will propose some development of kind of this area. And with that developed proposal, there will be reciprocal parking and access easements adopted for all lots. So access will not be an issue in the future.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Warren?
Is that written into the agreement with both properties? So if I happen to buy that front half, but I have an agreement that I would have access to that back half, and where is that lot line going to be in relation to the front of the building? How far out from the front of the building? How many feet? Did you drive a truck down through there? You need to from the back side because you won't have access from the front side. How does a fire truck get around the back and get around to the front?
I think he's going to show you a map here up on the screen so he can demonstrate.
I looked at that map. I can't read it from here. But I don't know how far the lot line is in front of the existing building. How many feet? And if it goes all the way down to then you can't come around from behind the existing building to get into.
So if you look at this exhibit, the yellow line, what was it? As it is in its current state, the purple line is the new lot line adjustment. This is right in the main driveway in front of the Kmart site, the old Kmart building. So it's right, it's the driveway that separates the parking lot from the building itself.
The front of the Kmart is a straight line. Down the building, it's straight as an arrow. There's no little crooks and things like that. So my question is, how far out in front is the lot line?
It's right in the driveway approach. So as I've indicated, the building doesn't cross the parcel line. There will be reciprocal parking and access easements for this parcel, for both parcels. It's just a bifurcation of the lot to better suit the needs of the people that own it.
If there's reciprocal parking, I understand that. Is that written into the deeds of each one of these properties?
It will be written into the deeds, yes. And it's usually recorded on the map. So we expect that the parcels that you see here today, there are two, are probably going to be subdivided into four in the near future, and that'll all be accommodated on the parcel map. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any questions on this matter? All right, saying none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for a motion.
Take a motion, item B on the consent count.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Katchel. Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Right.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, item five, General Plan Amendment 21-02 Rezone, 21-03 Site Plan Approval, and 21-04 Proposal involving the construction of a multifamily apartment complex and an amendment to both the existing general plan and zoning designations of the property located at 2125 Moffett Road. Energy Tour Construction is the applicant. Staff report.
Thank you. Tom, can you get page forty? Page forty. There we go. Okay, so just to give the Commission some background. Earlier this year, the applicant discussed staff with the possibility of developing an apartment complex on this 1.2 acre site located here at 2125 Moffett Road, where staff had informed the applicant that the proposal required that properties existing commercial general plan and zoning designations to be modified to put their family residential destinations to potentially allow for residential development. On May 12th, the applicant submitted for a general plan amendment and rezone and a site plan approval entitlement for proposal to construct a 28-unit apartment complex for the site, as you see here on the screen. So what you have here is a site that currently has a community commercial general plan and zoning designations. That particular designation typically prohibits residential development. To allow for the construction of the development, the project first needs approval of an amendment to the general plan, zoning designations, and community commercial, the multifamily designation. More specifically, what's going, what would happen is the community commercial general plan designation would change to high-density residential. And the rezone would change the commercial designation to a R5 high-density multiple-family residential. In the opinion of staff, the project promotes an internal development that is consistent with nearby properties within the area that have multifamily development and are designated with a family residential designation such as medium-density residential or high-density residential under the city's general plan. This proposal for 28 units brings the density to a project area of 23.3 units per acre, which is the reason why the high-density residential designation is being proposed. High-density residential designation allows for 20 to 30 units per acre. And for this area of 1.2 acres, that would typically allow for the development of up to 36 dwelling units. And with that, the project is at a lower density compared to what the developer could potentially have here. So as far as the overall site plan is concerned, the project consists of a development plan of four two-story buildings to accommodate 28 dwelling units. Each unit is designed as a two-bedroom, two-bath unit, approximately about 875 square feet in size each, and 56 parking spaces to serve the project. The primary entrance and access to the complex will be at the northeast end of the corner of Moffett Road with the 30-foot wide driveway file extending along the north property line of the site that transitions toward a 25-foot wide gated access feature to be used for emergency access at the southwest end of the site. There will also be a six-foot tall perimeter block wall that incorporates these 16-inch square pilasters. They're kind of decorative. They'll be along the west and south property line. They'll also be on-site landscaping along the entire perimeter in the front of the area. Tom, could you change it to page 43? Thanks. And so here are the building elevations. Again, they're going to be two-story dwelling units within four buildings. The exterior will be basically a tan color finish for the main body. There'll be wood trim for the accent areas and some composition roof material. The overall building height will be about 30 feet. Generally, staff believes the overall design here can be supported as it does meet development standards consistent with the R5 high-density multiple-family residential zone district, which allows for that type of development. And the number of dwelling units proposed at 28 is a lot lower than what the applicant could potentially be allowed, which would, could be as much as 36. So additionally, the proposal is consistent with the general plan in that it provides another housing option to accommodate the housing needs of the residents. With that said, staff has no objections to the applicant's request, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Thank you, James. Does anyone on the Commission have any questions of staff?
No.
Saying none, I will then open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And as a reminder, there's five minutes for public comment per person.
Dave Ubel, and I am the, first of all, I want to thank you for listening and hearing me. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I've got eight different issues with the particular property, and I have extra copies if you need them for file purposes. I'll cover it as quickly as possible. First issue is traffic. Currently, it's next to impossible for the residents within 10 to 12 houses set of this proposed project to pull out of the driveways between the hours of 8:00 and 9:30, and again from 2:30 to 3:30, without an action of a blinded potential accident. I say blinded, the traffic doesn't know it's coming, the person pulling out of the driveway doesn't know it's coming, but the traffic is backed up all the way down Moffett. If you haven't been there during those hours, I would really recommend that you take a look at that. Second thing is parking. Multifamily units next door, which are at 2121 Moffett, there's 50 units there now with over 100 parking spots, and it can't fulfill the parking needs for that project that's already been built 20, 30 years ago. And so that overflow runs down Moffett Field and in front of all the residences, anywhere from 10 to 12 homes, from Garrison on up to Moffett. So even though they're proposing two parking spots per apartment, that's the same thing the apartments next door did, and they have an additional probably 20 to 25 cars that are parked up and down the street. So the parking probably will not cover this new project that they're putting in. Years ago, the residents of Moffett were told that the current apartments would not bring in any additional crime, theft, gangs, shootings, you name it, we've seen it all. It's all come from the apartments that are already there. To put another multifamily unit in next door, it's going to double the problems we already have. Sixth thing is, is we'd like to know how this will affect the water and the utilities that are already with the residents on that street. We already know there's a shortage of water. We're told not to water our lawns. That needs to be looked at. We're just asking, where's the extra water coming from? Most important one I want to bring up here is that the current apartment complex has one entry in and out. That entry will be less than 200 feet from the new entry and exit of the new apartments. And so basically, you're, it's already a danger zone. And what we're looking at is doubling the danger with two driveways within 200 feet of each other and traffic already lined up and down Moffett Road. I appreciate your time. If you would like copies, I do have copies of everything I just covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And at some point before you leave, you may want to give a copy of that to the clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come to the podium. I'm sorry, sir. You can go next. Mr. Warren.
John Warren, Series resident. Similar issue that the previous speaker spoke of. The turning radius of the average passenger car, turning circle of an average passenger car, 34 to 35 feet. The driveway entrance into this new apartment complex is only 32 feet wide. An ambulance cannot turn around in that driveway or inside when it comes to help someone. Fire truck can't turn around. I understand there's access on the back side that's in the existing Richland parking lot area. But who opens those gates? And how do they open? Fire trucks that go in and out of there for an emergency service. I don't know what the turning radius of a hook and ladder fire truck is, but I don't think you make the turn at the end where you go to make that L to go out of this project. And obviously, they're not going to come in through those gates because it's going to slow them down to get the gates open. The parking is a problem. I counted every space that was on the picture that was up there previously. On the backside of those apartments, there's supposed to be a space for 10 open air spots, and I only count eight. So there's not enough parking there if you count the spaces that are in the diagram. There's two places for handicap people. I'm assuming that there's only going to be two handicap cars in that apartment complex, where there's going to be 56 spaces. There's no overflow parking for visitors when grandma comes to visit because the lady's having a baby, she's going to stay there for a week. Where does she park? Out on Moffett, as we already know, there's no room out on Moffett any longer. It's taken up by the other apartment complex, the people on Garrison and that live there currently on the street that other housing exists. A need for housing in our community. But to me, if this project encroached on the existing Richland parking lot properties, because you're going to have to have access there, and there has to be some easement that will allow emergency vehicles in and out of that gate that's on the backside there. If there's no easement and there's no allowance, then that gate is worthless back there because you can't turn into something that you don't have. So if there was another 32 or 40 feet that belonged to that vacant lot, then you could have a U-shaped parking entrance and egress. That would help some of the traffic problems, but not address all of the problems because there's no overflow parking. There's nothing for visitors. Someone comes to visit you, where to park? The parking lot down on Garrison by the by the school? There's access problems. The hook and ladder making the turn down there because that hook and ladder goes everywhere in this city. Those questions need to be answered.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Sir? Please state your name.
Moffett Road resident, 2128. I have a question for you. Is it possible to consider at this point changing the use a little bit on that building they're proposing? Could it be a mixed use? Trying to cut down on the traffic? Try not to squash the project? You can meet halfway, maybe do residential on top, business below offices? If we cut down some traffic? Noise? And I have a concern too about maybe future section eight? The house there? And I think on your general plan, for some reference to level of service as far as road movement goes, they have like A to F designations. And that section of road right there where we are, three, back from the stop sign on Garrison, see all three of those, it goes from A to F. There's no way to move on that road certain times of the day. Now that school's back, we're going to have excuse might address some of the issues. I'll something. But once again, traffic is on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter?
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Bain Molina, and my family home is on Seventh Street. First, we'd like to thank Energy Tour Construction and the City Neighborhood Meeting that was held last week. After having the opportunity to ask questions and raise up the impact of the project in our neighborhood, we are far more comfortable with the project. However, we do have several concerns that we believe are better before approving the site plan for this project. We ask that the Commission further examine stormwater currently handled by the land complex entrance Moffett and portion of the wall at the project's western limit before allowing this project. Stormwater collection point on our block on Seventh Street is directly in front of our house. For many decades, we've struggled with floodwaters and have worked with generations of city staff to improve wet weather conditions. Children grew up gauging the size of a storm by how many houses on each side of ours, a 14-foot loaded with kids could paddle each direction in. No matter the efforts of city staff to assist in the runoff from Richland Parking Lot behind, law of gravity still applies. Water flow following the driving paths down and some of the water that doesn't head to our house has always flowed to the bare land that this project will now develop and pay. Ask that this project be required to submit a stormwater plan to address all water currently processed by that parcel rather than simply applying water that falls directly. Also ask the Commission to examine the possibility of moving from the complex driveway further from the congestion of the intersection in the existing apartment complex driveway that is just to the north of the drop show. This is a heavily trafficked section of Moffett that is already seriously impacted by the school and park pedestrian crossings. They stop sign intersection, traffic in and out of the apartment complex into this area. Parking overflow from the existing apartment. Placing another drive into the same tight area. Finally, we are looking for some assurance in the record that the block wall shown at the project's west side will not require removal or otherwise damage. Garden and trees have been Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter?
Thank you for hosting in session. My name is horrend tour. I'm the owner of Energy Tour Construction. I've been a resident of series for at least a decade, and I've been in this community for about thirty-five years. I think it's a great project. Mr. Mr. Singh, who are the owners, had proposed a nice twellement. I don't think I have enough time to address all issues. Definitely not section eight. It'll be at a market rate. It'll definitely provide much-needed housing in city of series, and I've lived in this for at least decades, and I have a apartment complex constructed. It'll fill a void at that present lot that's been vacant, I guess, since the nineteen sixties. I think it's overall, it's a great project. I wish I had more than five minutes to address each issues, but I think I can probably take it offline and the residents and the neighbors regarding this project on a one-on-one basis perhaps at our office to address each Tom and I had discussed after our meeting last week about possibly switching the orientation of the building, but it will not maximize parking. So I know that's one of the main concerns of the residents is parking on Moffett. So in order to reach max capacity for parking, I think the way the building is designed and we look at every single angle, this is the most efficient route to go. Happy to address any questions topic after the meeting. Again, this is render tour and my phone number is six, five, two, five, six, three, three. That's my cell number direct if anybody has any
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on this matter? Did you want to speak to? Well, you can do that if you want to speak to him directly. Yes, sir. Well, normally we only let each member of the audience speak at one at one time each person. I'm I'm open to allowing you to speak again, but I don't want this to turn into a repeat thing. If you're going to share something new that we haven't heard, I'm I'm open hearing that.
Seems like California has inherited a new state flower, and that is a satellite dish. If is it possible to put in the contracts that they can't do individual satellite dishes and have a company come in there and do that? Because it does add to the eyesore of the community. Be nice. And also have a thought. I don't know anything about this part of it, but parking lot that all you'll spend all store parking lot is a way that that can be used for off-site parking instead of the street when these people have guests.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken that'd like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none.
Chair, I do think that the architect is online on Zoom. I do think he may be wishing to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Yoshino.
Yes, my name is Bernie Yoshino, and I am architect. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
He's got his hand raised.
Yeah, it appears that his mic is not muted, but he is not coming through our system.
Tom, Tom, for the participants on Zoom, he is coming through, but there may be some internal issue with the volume in chambers.
So is there any way I can speak? Hello? Can you hear me now? Hello?
Let's try her name.
Can you hear me now? Hello? Hello?
Mr. Yoshino, they're, I think they're trying to figure out the audio issues, but I don't believe they can hear you.
Oh, okay. I'll wait. I'd like to speak.
We're just going to have to move forward.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. So at this point, then I'll close the public hearing. If you're somehow able to get indication from Mr. Yoshino that he can communicate, please let me know. So thank you first of all to all of you for attending this evening and sharing your comments. Before I bring it back to the commission for questions, I appreciated all of them. And a couple of them, I don't know how you want to do this, Tom, but I thought maybe you might be able to address them. I think the traffic is an obvious one. There's a school there, so it has times of heavy traffic impact. You may want to talk about that as a residential development versus if it were to develop as a commercial project. And then I think it was Molina, Ms. Molina had some excellent concerns that I'd like to hear about in the stormwater. She brought up the placement wall and the protection of the fruit trees, and then also the potential of moving the driveway so that it wasn't next to the apartment complex that was that's right close to it. And I think that kind of covers the general conversation. Somebody asked about whether or not it was section eight. I think the applicant representative said it was market rate. There is some parking concern, but they are meeting the parking standards by the that the city has regard to the number of units. I don't know if you have anything additional to add to that, but I think that in general covered the general questions that were brought up. If you heard of any others, please feel free to address them.
Where would you like me to start?
Let's start with the stormwater.
Okay, so I think that there were some concern that the property in its current condition is unpaved. And if there is a rain event, that some of the water that may sheet and pool up from the Richland Shopping Center would would go onto this property and dissipate. What we do know is that this property, when it's designed, will have to accommodate its storm drainage on site. So the water hits this site if it's developed with impervious surfaces will handle all the water that hits the site. Because of engineering and so forth, if there is water that runs from the existing shopping center to the north of this piece, then that's something that the engineer is going to have to deal with as well. But at the end of the day, the development will make the circumstance with at least in the north half of the commercial center, all of that water will be retained on site, most likely in a French drain that's underground.
So it will not run out into the street or the adjacent neighborhood where already there's a standing water issue.
Yeah, I think that might be a different portion of the shopping center, which is a little bit further south of where this proposed development would actually be.
That's true.
The trees that were referenced, there the wall, there's some existing fruit trees on the west of the project site for a home that faces Seventh Street. When I was in the community meeting with the residents, it appeared that the wall would not impact those trees whatsoever, that it was going to be a little further to the east. So those trees should remain unharmed with the with the development of the project.
And then the driveway location.
So the driveway location, Mr. Tour kind of represented it. There was a concept of potentially flipping the buildings to the north side, but it was going to drop the yield in parking count, so that would be somewhat difficult. The other issue along the north side of the property is the Turlock Irrigation District easement. So there are some existing overhead utility lines that run, I guess, which would be the south side of the existing apartment complex, and they'll continue to run from the east to the west because they provide power to some of the residences along Seventh Street. So it doesn't appear that in this circumstance, without sacrificing unit counts, that we've been able to flop those units to the north side.
So the, okay, I can appreciate your explanation with regard to the placement of the units of the buildings and where the driveway must go in order to accommodate that placement. But there is going to be a traffic issue. There's a stop sign there. There's a school there, and I'm not sure if there's any way to mitigate any of this, but I'm I'm sure you've discussed it with the applicant.
Yeah, the only way to do something like that is to flip the approach so that the buildings would be on the north half of the parking lot and the drive aisle would be on the south. That's the only way to mitigate it because the parcel's only a couple hundred feet wide, so there's just not a lot of options to move it farther to the south.
All right. And then there was a concern raised by, I can't remember, I think it was the first gentleman who spoke regarding the number of parking units being required. There's twenty-eight units, and as a result, we're requiring two for every unit. And the concern that was raised was the adjacent, the apartment complex next door has fifty units and a hundred parking spots, but still that isn't enough, according to the citizen, to accommodate the parking. And I'm not sure what our ability to
So when the municipal code was updated, the former parking standard for multifamily developments was one point five parking spaces per unit. That was increased to two parking spaces per unit. So the development that's proposed this evening actually meets the new standard.
There was a question about the number of handicap?
Generally, in a commercial development, there's going to be a minimum of two handicap parking spaces provided, and they're generally close to each other. So state law requires us to to have handicap parking with the development of this type.
Requires two.
It requires two, yes.
Okay, I think there were also some questions about police and fire access. I'm not sure if you are, we, I think we talked about it, but the turnaround.
So there, so the the project doesn't have a turnaround, so to speak, you know, police cars are pretty nimble. They can move. Fire trucks are a little bit larger. That's why at the south west portion of the site, there is a emergency vehicle access with a gate. What that'll happen is if our fire trucks have to get on site and they need to to move in a forward direction to get off the property, they'll have a Knox lock, which the fire department will have key to, so they can open the gate to get out. But it would not be open for residents to come or go from that end of the property.
And of course, the fire department reviews the plan through the development review process.
They do. And I think the only other question about the traffic and traffic generation. So this property had been marketed as a potential for commercial development. I think for a period of about two to three years, where it could have been an office complex or something like that, or some type of retail development. There was no interest in doing something like that because it was pulled so far back from Whitmore Avenue. In a commercial circumstance, the traffic generation would be much higher than it would be as a residential development. It's just the trips are different. And so i- in a office environment, you may have an office open from nine in the morning until seven o'clock at night. You're pretty much going to have constant trips throughout the day. With the residential project, generally you have kind of a peak where you're going to have some trips early in the morning and then some trips later in the day. But you don't have as many of them constantly throughout the day. So actually, this project likely as a residential development would generate less traffic counts or less trips than a commercial development would.
In total.
In total, yeah.
But not during these peak hours like going to work and coming home from work. Thank you. I think I covered most of the questions, or at least the categories from folks in the audience. Is there anyone on the commission?
About water.
Oh, thank you.
Water, dry and gentrify, thank you.
That's on.
So so an apartment complex is going to use a lot less water than an additional single-family home. In terms of pressure in the system, there's a well that's on Garrison, just a couple hundred yards away from the site. As the commission may be aware, the city has been working for two decades on securing additional water sources to supplement our groundwater. And that is coming in the form of the surface water treatment plant, which is online and hopefully will be it's under construction and hopefully will be available by the year twenty twenty-three. But as a residential project, this will use far less water than a traditional single-family home to be and primarily there's not the outside landscaping that's a part of a traditional single-family home.
Anything else, Mr.? Any questions from the commission?
I think they've all been answered. It looks like a pretty, pretty congested little property, though. All the answers have been
Yeah, I think, you know, there are some issues here that probably aren't going to be able to be addressed to the satisfaction of everyone. I appreciate the applicant's interest in meeting with the members in the of the community and the neighbors who are who are going to be experiencing the impacts daily, and I hope you'll continue to have those conversations as it relates to any concerns that come out. But the housing is an important, it's an important thing, and everybody knows that we have a housing shortage, and this will provide twenty-eight new units in an area that desperately needs it, and I'm I'm in favor of of this project, and I plan to support it. Have anything you'd like to share?
The brief mention on the parking issue, it's requirement, this is two spaces per unit, which is the same as a single-family residential, I believe, in series. And we're all sensitive to this, but just as in apartment complex, if you live in a single-family dwelling and you have visitors, which was mentioned, your question asked, those visitors park off your property, they park on the street, which is the same situation that you get here. Is it a good situation? Is it ideal? No, but that's the way we all live in our residential communities up and down California elsewhere. Two spaces for unit is generally considered for the people residing in unit or on unit. And the extra parking on the street, so it can help my visitors, and that's the way we all live my street for six. I got my cars, two cars in the garage, and that takes care of it. Seem to have a lot of neighbors enjoying having parties. Always somebody parked in front of my house. On the street, there's people generations of people living in the house, and it's just there's only so much you can put on site. So it's something, I guess, I just wanted to acknowledge that we all live with this. It's not ideal. And it's a busy area, and that's that's an issue too, and combination with the school there. The one street parking that that happens already from the apartment complex and the residents are running on that street. All very congested down there. Is it a good idea to put additional units here? Hundred percent sure, but on the other hand, as pointed out, we're talking traffic generation. Commercial use of the same size of property would generate more traffic on a daily basis than with the residential. So have to kind of balance these out when in making a decision and evaluating thoughts at this point.
Yeah. Any comments from the committee?
I think you said most of it. Sometimes it's an extremely tough decision. And just for the audience, we all live in series to be on the planning committee, so we're pretty aware of some of the traffic issues, and I do agree this could cause more, but we got the new housing that could come in. That is a positive, so I don't know what the right answer is.
Thank you. All right. So if there's no other comments from the commission, I will ask for a motion. Need a motion to proceed.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that we approve PC resolution two thirteen. I need more numbers on there, Tom.
You can make a motion and do them all at once if you wish.
Yes, all.
There's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Yes, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, will a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Donero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Cattell.
Aye.
And Chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-1.
Thank you. Moving on, new business, there's none, no public meetings, no unfinished business, no matters initiated by the planning commission. Moving on to reports, is there anything from the commission to report? City Attorney?
Good evening, Chair. Can you all hear me?
Audio problems. Tom?
Yeah, the commission members just, I know that you're all aware that this will be my last planning commission meeting. Over my 20-year career, I've probably attended 400 or so planning commission meetings and tonight will be the final one, which is a little bit bittersweet. This was one of my, of my first jobs as a professional. Started as an associate planner and, and have had the pleasure to serve many commission and then a number of folks that have gone on the dais and off the dais over the number of years. So my last official day with the city will be next Monday night, so my city council meeting on August 23rd and that'll be a career for Tom Westbrook and the city of Series. But I do thank you, commission members, for all the support that you've given to staff over the years and I just simply say thank you.
Well, Tom, I, I've known you for 14 and a half years as the entire time I've been on the planning commission and I've learned a lot from you. And in spite of the fact that you've been a giant pain in the rough, I'm going to miss you and I wish you all the best in your new community, which right now is escaping me, Red Bluff. And I'm sure you're, you're going to enjoy it up there and they're going to be very fortunate to have you. And hey, you never know. Mom back.
Much cooler. Like to second what she said. I've known Tom, only I've since I've been on the commission almost 14 years now, but before that in previous life, I had a job, retired, I worked with Tom Manny, consummate professional right from the beginning, always added terrific input, terrific information and serving on this commission for all these years as my knowledge base has changed. You've been a rock to rely on and count on, have faith in you and James as well and the entire staff. See, Series has been wonderful and you've been a key part of that staff for all these years as a Series resident. Proud to have you here and same time I wish you all the best in your homecoming. Pigra.
Thank you.
Real quick, Tom, you will be missed. I don't quite have the background that these guys do with you, that you've been a pleasure to work with, open door policy. We missed.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Right, and at this time I will adjourn the planning commission meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, September 7th.